I'm going to call to order the City of Norco City Council and Financing Authority Regular Meeting for Wednesday, October 2nd. The Clerk is going to call the roll.
Councilmember Newton?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Here.
Councilmember Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hanna?
Yes.
Mayor Grunmeyer?
Yes.
All present?
Thank you. The City Council will now recess to close session to consider the items on the agenda. I'm going to call to order the City of Norco City Council Meeting and Financing Authority Meeting for Wednesday, October 2nd. At this time, we're going to have a Report of Actions taken in closed session.
Yes, the City Council considered the matters listed on the closed session agenda, and there are no reportable actions.
All right, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, if you will please join us, Councilmember Bash is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then please stay standing for the invocation.
(Pleading) Ready to begin? (Pleading) In the name of the United States of America, and in the name of the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we're going to have our invocation by Pastor Renee Parrish from Beacon Hill Assembly of God.
Thank you. We are blessed. We just celebrated 50 years of the City of Norco, and we hosted pastors throughout the Inland Empire at our East Campus, and they all drove in, they said, "There's horses." I said, "Of course." So, we are very thankful. I just want to say that to the City Council, all the council members, to continue to minister in this community. So, Lord, we thank you, Lord. I thank you personally for growing up here, and, Lord, God, for the opportunity, Lord, to minister here, Lord, and for our congregation to have served here for so long. And, Lord, I thank you, God, Lord, in the midst of the changes, God, that there has been such great and wonderful changes in terms of our diversity, Lord, God, the broadening of the impact and influence of our community, Lord, upon our larger community, and, Lord, our continued, Lord, holding to the traditions, God, and our reason for being. So, Lord, as we, God, enter into this stage of our City Council, Lord, government, Lord, and meeting, Lord, that you would again request that you would guide, Lord, and direct, give wisdom, Lord, broaden, Lord, Jesus, the impact and influence, Lord, of our community upon our surrounding community, Father. Lord, I pray, God, that you help, Lord, our leaders, Lord, to continue to safeguard our reason for being, Lord, and to enhance the life, God, and, Lord, protect, God, the liberties, Lord, of our community. And, Lord, we thank you for this, Lord, for your continued guidance and grace over the City of Norco and all who dwell in. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right. At this time, we are going to move to our Business Appreciation. So, Mr. DeRosa is going to join me at the podium.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and I'd like to invite John and Kristi up to the podium, please, from DFI Insurance. Come over here. Now, I'm going to admit right up front that I'm going to destroy and butcher the family's name because I've been practicing all day and night, still, it's a tongue twister for me, so forgive me in advance. So, John and Kristi are here on behalf of John...
DeGioralamo.
DeGioralamo? Up close. Can't I just say Dronamo? Just kidding. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For those of you who may not know me, my name is Scott DeRosa, and I'm a member of the Norco Economic Development Advisory Council, known as EDAC. And on behalf of the City Council and EDAC, I am pleased to assist Mayor Grunmeyer with presenting this month's Business Appreciation Award to DFI Insurance, or otherwise known as DeGioralamo Family Insurance. Are they somewhat close? DFI Insurance was started in Cerritos, California, in 1982 by Frank, I put this name in here so many times, DeGioralamo Senior. And by 1992, his foresons had expanded their customer base throughout the state and moved their service hub to Riverside. In 2000, his foresons formed a partnership and purchased the old Colwell Bankers Building on Second and Hamner for one of their offices. They are now licensed in 13 states, and they have chosen Norco and the Inland Empire as their home. And in the words of John DeGioralamo, and I quote, "There's no better community than the IE, especially Norco, and we have grown to love and respect this wonderful, warm-hearted, God-fearing, people-loving horsetown," end of quote. So additionally, DFI Insurance has been a consistent supporter of the Norco High School Football Team, the Hundred Mile Club, Norco's Horsemen Association, Lake Nacorion Foundation, Support Sistas, Salasaur Riders, Norco Fair, the military signs and banners that you see on the streets, and many Norco Area Chamber events. So congratulations to DFI Insurance for being the recipient of Norco's October 2019 Business Appreciation Award. And I'll turn the mic over to Mayor Grunmeyer for the presentation of the award.
So it's my pleasure, on behalf of the City of Norco and the City Council, to present to you this plaque. The City of Norco hereby honors DFI Insurance, a family-operated company whose values of faith, service, and loyalty reflect the community it adopted as its home nearly 20 years ago. So congratulations.
On behalf of the DeGioralamo Brothers, I personally, I'm Kristi, and I've been with them for almost 12 years now, known them even longer than that. I know that they appreciate this honor, but they also don't like to brag about anything. They would want all the glory to go to God. So, thank you very much.
Thank you as well, and just wanted you to know the brothers would love to be here tonight. Each one of them had different responsibilities, so Kristi and I are the ones blessed to be here, and thank you very much.
At this time, it is my pleasure to do a special recognition, so if Markell could come up, please.
So, ladies and gentlemen, some of you may recognize Markell. I know I see him driving around and always has a friendly wave. If you see him driving around town in the scout truck for Waste Management, we were fortunate enough when the school district was with Waste Management, he came to the Ag Department and did our tipping service. So, Markell showed how much he cares about people, how much he cares about doing the right thing, and doing more above and beyond the call of service for his job. So the City of Norco would like to recognize Markell for assisting a resident who was suddenly bucked off her horse by quickly jumping into action to secure the horse and help the resident request medical attention, and for continuously displaying awareness and compassion while serving our animal-keeping community.
Hi.
Well, I'm not, you know, this is kind of humbling for me. I guess doing something that I feel you're supposed to do, and being rewarded for it is huge to me. So, I just want to thank the City Council for this opportunity, the residents of Norco, which I've been out here on the same route for like about 13 years, so it's kind of home away from home for me. I think I spend more time in Norco than I do at home.
He does.
So, I just, you know, I want to thank everyone else. I want to thank Ms. Abby for even sending the letter to Waste Management and letting them know what I did, because I wasn't going to tell anybody at all, which I didn't tell anybody, but I truly appreciate it. And, you know, also too, I also take my job to, for giving us a proper training to be aware of your surroundings at all times. So when we out there driving, it's not just for us to pay attention to our job, but everything else that goes in the residence. So, I truly appreciate this, and thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Well, on behalf of Waste Management, we do want to thank you and everyone on Council, and Kelly, for, you know, making our community aware of Markell's great deed. He definitely exemplifies what we value in our drivers, and if there's anyone who is Norco, it is Markell. I could tell him, this resident, he gives me their address, he gives me what they have. So, Markell, thank you so much for everything you do for us on a daily basis. So, you are a true example of what we like in our team. Thank you. This day is even more special because Markell's daughter is a military, belongs to a military family, and she actually is stationed in England, but she's able to be here today.
This is the good stuff that we get to do. So now, we're going to move on to our Red Ribbon Week proclamation.
All right, come on in.
Yeah, I'm looking around. So I'll do my proclamation, and then you guys can tell us all about what you have going on. All right, ladies and gentlemen, in case you didn't know, Red Ribbon Week is coming up, so we have a proclamation. Whereas cities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use, and whereas substance abuse is particularly damaging to one of our most valuable resources, our children, and a contributing factor in the three leading causes of death for teenagers, accidents, homicides, and suicides, and whereas the red ribbon was chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of DEA agent Kiki Camarena, who was murdered in 1985 in the line of duty, and has come to represent his belief that one person can make a difference, and whereas the Red Ribbon Celebration was established by Congress in 1988 to promote this belief and encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention efforts, and whereas the 2019 Red Ribbon Week theme, Send a Message, Stay Drug Free, is a call to action to speak out in support of healthy choices, it's also a reminder that by staying drug-free, you are sending a message to yourself and others about how much you value yourself, your overall health, your community, and your future. And whereas the Corona Norco Unified School District further commits its support and resources to ensure the success of Red Ribbon Week and year-round alcohol, tobacco, and other drug abuse prevention efforts, now therefore I, Robin Grunmeyer, Mayor of the City of Norco, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim October 23rd through the 31st, 2019, designation as Red Ribbon Week, and calling on all citizens to show their support for a drug-free city by wearing a red ribbon and participating in a drug-free activity during this week.
Thank you. We could do that.
I can hide behind her. I'd much rather do that.
Well, good evening, and thank you, Mayor Grunmeyer, council members, and guests. My name's Kristen Vargo, and I am actually our Corona Norco Council PTA President for this year and next. And I also sit on the Unity Board and Red Ribbon Committee Board. And we are here representing Red Ribbon tonight. Robin Jones and Carol Coyne, who are instrumental in that committee, couldn't be here, so you get me. The council members have been provided a red, obviously, folder that has information about our activities and festivities this year. One thing that I wanted to point out that you guys received is the 2019-2020 calendar. And of the 12 months, seven of the 12 winners are from Corona Norco Council, or from Corona Norco School District. I apologize. So, that's awesome. And now, I'd like to introduce my daughter, Cambria, and she will give a little background on Red Ribbon, which you already heard in our proclamation, as well as go over some of the basic information for our events this year.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council members, and guests. My name is Cambria Vargo, and I'm a sophomore at Santiago High School. I'm also one of the student representatives on the Corona Norco Council PTA. The Red Ribbon Campaign began in California in 1986 to honor federal agent Enrique Camarena, who was killed by drug traffickers in Mexico. The campaign went nationwide in 1987, and every year, Red Ribbon Week celebrations are held from October 23rd to the 31st. The purpose of Red Ribbon Week is to present a positive, unified, and visible commitment towards drug-free America. I'd like to introduce the theme of our Red Ribbon Campaign for this year, which is Send a Message, Stay Drug Free. We are having our poster contest as well as our creative contest again this year. All of the information is in the packet that Ms. Jones provided. We invite you to join us at a Red Ribbon Family Fun Festival on Sunday, October 27th, at Promenade Park. Again, this information is also in the packet. We are also looking for entertainment, so if you know of a group or individual, please let us know. Last, if you or someone you know would like to host a booth, the registration form is included in the packet. Thank you, and have a great night.
And just one more little thing that I'll follow up with. In your packet is one sheet, save the dates, and we'd like to invite you to do contest judging November 4th, Cronie City Hall, November 5th, CNUSD Learning Center North, for our poster contest, as well as our creative writing contest. And our recognition evening for the contest winners, November 21st, at the District Office Learning Center South. And again, our Family Fun Festival, which everybody is invited to, and everybody is invited to participate, is on October 27th at Promenade Park from 12 to 4:00. All right? Thank you very much.
All right. One more presentation. If Chief Owens could come up, please. So we are going to be recognizing Chief Owens. He will be moving to a different job still with Cal Fire, so he will be leaving Norco. So the City of Norco would like to recognize Chief Owens for proudly leading the Norco Fire Department for over four years, consistently advocating for the City of Norco, and ensuring the community has the resources required to keep residents, animals, and property safe.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Council, City Staff, I'd like to say thank you. Citizens as well, thank you for the support you have for Cal Fire, our organization the last four years has been a blessing for me. You know, it's one of those assignments I promoted into, from fire captain to battalion chief, came to Norco, hadn't been here since about the late '90s, the last assignment I had here in the city. So, I was honored and proud to be a member of the community, working as a battalion chief here in the city as part of your fire staff. So I appreciate the welcoming when I got here as well, at the original City Council meeting, and the support we continue to have from the community and the council, and all the city staff, so thank you.
So we are going to move into the City Council business items with Agenda Item Number One, which is City Council Communications and Reports on Regional Boards and Commissions. We will start with Mayor Pro Tem Hanna.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got a fire point tonight of commissions I'm on here. As you see, RTA launched a new app yesterday on your phone. You can actually purchase your bus tickets and have it put on your phone, where when you get on the bus, they just scan it. They even do it for disabled and senior citizens. And today at our one little committee meeting, yesterday was the first day, and they had over 300 people sign up, so it's going to make it quicker and easier for everybody to ride the buses and everything. And then the little bottom catch there is, if you want to go to Southern California Fire down in Paris, they have buses running down to that thing, so... This is a little short video of construction on the 15 freeway. It's called 15 on the 15. Pretty interesting. It shows them bringing in the big 177-foot concrete beams. They bring them in from Paris on a special truck. They're bringing in, let's see, they started three weeks ago, and it's going to take them 12 weeks to get them all delivered up here and put in the River Bridge to expand it.
The Riverside County Transportation Commission presents 15 Facts on the 15 Express Lanes. This edition looks at the transport of giant precast girders to the Santa Ana River Bridge. Construction of the 15 Express Lanes requires widening of 11 bridges, including the 1,800-foot-long Santa Ana River Bridge. Using precast girders to widen the bridge reduces the effects to the environmentally sensitive river area below by minimizing the need to build temporary support structures. Due to their size, the girders for the Santa Ana River Bridge require special handling. The girders are cast off-site in Paris, in Western Riverside County, and transported to the Santa Ana River Bridge late at night using skill, safety, and ingenuity. The trip from Paris covers 60 miles and can take up to three hours. Traveling from street to street or on ramps to highways requires tight turns and skillful maneuvers by the transport vehicles. Each vehicle is 210 feet long and requires the width of two traffic lanes, along with a special CHP escort team. Tipping the scales at more than 132 tons each, these massive girders are the heaviest ever transported in California, measuring 175 feet long, 7 and 1/2 feet tall, and 4 feet wide. To give it some perspective, imagine transporting the largest mammal ever, a blue whale, at 115 tons, down the freeway. Once the girders arrive at the Santa Ana River Bridge, two specialized cranes work together to lift each massive girder slowly, precisely, into position on the bridge. Workers carefully secure the girder in place. This process is repeating weekly, over several months, delivering a total of 55 girders to complete the widening of the Santa Ana River Bridge and making the new 15 Express Lanes Want to stay connected? Sign up on our website or by text for weekly construction updates.
There's our vector report. That's Man and Mat's little mascot there, the mouse with the mosquito on his nose. But the last few weeks have been several cases of West Nile virus reported across the state. I believe there's eight, is what I read the other day. And the ones in Riverside County, they don't tell you what city they're in or what area, they just tell you the counties. And there's also been several human cases across the state, so be sure and vaccinate your horses and protect yourselves. And I'll add a little bit to that video of the 1515. You wonder how they make the turns? They have four CHP cars escorting each truck, two at the front and two at the back. And in the middle ways of that trailer back there, there's this instrument sitting on the trailer, and there's a car drives alongside of it with a driver and a guy running a remote control. So when they get to where they turn, well, the guy sitting in the passenger side, he maneuvers the buttons and makes all the wheels turn and everything, and that's how they get it moved. And the only reason they only, they only work three nights a week bringing these in is because that's the only time that, that's all that escorts at the CHP will give them is for three nights, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So, I went over here and watched them unload them about three weeks ago. It's pretty interesting. Everything has to be in sync with those two crane operators and everything, and when they get them unloaded, they shrink the trailer back down where it's almost a normal-sized trailer, and go back to Paris and stretch it out and get another one. So, that's a pretty interesting deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoffman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to thank all of you who came to the POW MIA ceremony on September 20th. I appreciate it all, especially for the Norco High students, the Norco High School, the junior ROTC team under Sergeant Spratley. They did a beautiful job in the ceremony there that morning. I attended the Corona Norco Unified School District human trafficking presentation done by Opal Singleton. You know, and the Sheriff Lieutenant could probably back me up on this, human trafficking, you need to understand it. It's not something foreign. It's here, in our area, it's here in our country, but it really is, affects the Inland Empire. And so, I would suggest that you all go to Million Kids, the website there, and learn a little bit about it, especially parents. Figure out what your kids are doing on the Internet. You know, put some controls on it. Understand who they're talking to. It's serious business. Last night, we had our NART training, and since Cal Fire here, both here, want to thank you guys. We've got our brand-new UC Davis Lift, and we were playing with it last night. I know they're not cheap, and we appreciate all the work you guys do for us to put this together. Our old one was just that. It was getting old. It was all 20 years of use, at least, Berlin?
Twelve years.
Twelve years, and...
100 horses.
About 200 horses, and UC Davis actually did a better job in how they configured the new one, so hopefully we won't have any more problems. Then finally, I want to talk about the Riqua, the Western Riverside County Regional Wastewater Plant. The good news is, Andy, we're going to get some money back. The bad news is, they're going to take it back. They have to, over the years, we've had to work on curtailing the odor that's being generated out of the plant. So, any monies that we'll probably get back from savings that we've had, from the refunds due to lower costs from maintaining the place, we're going to lose back trying to get that thing fixed over the next couple of years. So, but if you guys, if any interested high school guys you want to learn about this Saturday, you can go take... you can go take a tour of the Western Riverside County Regional Wastewater Authority Treatment Plant on Saturday. And the tour is beginning between 9:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m., 9:00 to 10:00, and off the River Road there in Eastville. It's free, so go learn how to handle manure, well, human waste, put it that way. Thank you. That's all, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Bash.
I'm actually going to turn this over to our lawyer. He's going to talk a little bit about some of the notifications we've gotten concerning the high transmission lines. Just your take on that.
Sure. Just some kind of basic stuff. As you're all aware, there was kind of good news, bad news. The City of Norco, while petitioned to be a party to the environmental review by California Public Utilities Commission Hearing Officer, the city was not granted party status because the issues that the city is concerned about aren't addressed in that environmental impact report and nor in the project which has been proposed. That is specifically the fire dangers that the potential project would create. CalFire has indicated that this is a severe fire hazard area, and the city felt that that should be addressed in planning the project, and it was not. The positive thing about not being a party is that unlike a party who is limited to communicating with the hearing officer in a very formalized form, the city may deal directly with the California Public Utilities Commission and with their staff and with individual commissioners. And so, it's the city's hope that, given this opportunity, that the California Public Utilities Commission will, on its own hook, consider the potential environmental hazard, which wasn't addressed. The issues that Kevin is discussing is, we, I've had the opportunity to make contact with both the former executive director of the California Public Utilities Commission and, most recently, the chief general counsel, who is charged with reviewing environmental issues for the California Public Utilities Commission. Both of them are aware of the issue, as Kevin has indicated at the last meeting. There is actually a regional rep who has been responsive and is going to come down at some point in the near future and tour the area so that they get an understanding. All this meaning that it's raising the visibility of these issues before the commission, as opposed to what would have happened at this hearing officer. And frankly, we would have had no impact on the final decision. The governor, two days, Saturday, I guess Saturday, issued an executive order N-05-19, which directs CalFire within the next 45 days to prepare a report concerning policies and procedures which will address the potential of wildfire hazards, including looking at areas that are potentially significantly affected, for example, here. Although this has already been designated that area, so I'm not sure what impact that study will have. It also directs CalFire to, and the state agencies, to cooperate with one another in developing this study and making recommendations to the governor's office. I don't know that it will have any specific effect on the Southern California Edison-City Riverside project, at least direct effect, but again, it's something that California Public Utilities Commission, who's one of those agencies who is going to be involved with CalFire. It raises the level of visibility of our issue. And so, again, we're, it's still, you know, a long shot, but we're a lot closer to getting where we want to go.
And mention the opinion of the...
I was going to say, that's one thing I didn't mention, that there is also a public advocate which, I'd say independently provides comments to the Public Utilities Commission on projects. And the public advocate has indicated that they don't believe that the project is necessary, which is a giant step for us. On the other hand, we don't have any real feel for what the public advocate, what their influence is on the commission, which is, as you know, a very highly political body. But we're about as far as we can go, and we're much closer to the goal line than we thought we'd be at this point. And now it's, sit back and see what happens.
All right. Councilmember Newton.
Thank you. Great day from Northern. I'm not there, Andy. There's really a lot of... I'm done.
All right. Councilmember Newton.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm starting to catch up on Disalter Authority Board meetings, so we had another one last week. Pretty standard stuff, nothing earth-shattering to report. One thing I neglected to put on there was last week, myself, Brian Petrie, and the mayor attended the City of Europa Valley's State of the City speech. Had a great dinner, and I'm sure the mayor will want to comment more about that here in a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Newton. So, I have nothing to report at this time, however, I will say when a State of the City goes for two hours, that kind of negates dinner plans and you get Wiener Schnitzel at 9:30 at night. So, there you have it. So, what happens when you're a politician sometimes, I guess. So, moving on to item number two, city council consent items. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Prior to the motion to consider any action by the council, any public comments on any of the consent items will be heard. There will be no separate action unless members of the council or the audience request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar. Items removed from the consent calendar will be separately considered under item number three on our agenda. So, do any of my colleagues wish to pull any items?
Madam Mayor, I could pull K, as in King.
Okay.
It was on K. That's it.
Any other items? Okay. Are there any cards from the audience?
There are no speaker cards.
Okay. So, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item K.
Please vote. Motion passes unanimous.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to item number three, which are those items pulled from the consent calendar. So, Councilmember Hoffman has pulled K.
Yeah. Just one question for Chad. In looking at the awarded bid, and I don't have a problem with the low bid, but I'm looking at, we've got an $800,000 to $300 and some thousand, which was, which is what you want us to approve. My question is, is I know we were obligated for the lowest bidder, but because of the discrepancies in that amount, do we have faith in this guy at the low bid? And I say that because we've already been caught in that predicament before in some paving issue, and I'm just hoping that this guy can do what he's supposed to do. Because when you see the one bid for $849,000 plus, and he's sitting there with 369, 442, that's almost $500,000 difference. And that's what I'm just trying to make sure that he's, this isn't over his head.
Good question. It's not uncommon to have that broad range in many of our bids that come in. You commonly will have usually a grouping of bids that come in fairly close together, but then you usually have, it's not uncommon to have a really high one. And candidly, why that occurs, it's usually just a contractor throwing in a bid, and if nobody submits a bid, they get a project that they're going to get well-paid for. But consider that what they proposed was not even close to what the engineer's estimate would justify, i.e. the highest bidder. But this is pretty standard practice for what we get as public works projects and on a steady basis. It's rare that we actually get them all together, candidly. But we, based off talking with the folks that they listed as their other projects they've completed, you know, we got an impression that they can handle the work. And if, even if we didn't get a good impression that they have difficulties or they tend to do a lot of change orders, things like that, it's up to our responsibility to be on the contractor with our inspector and keep them to what the plans require. So, we're our own cop when it comes to making sure that contractors do what they're supposed to do and the way that we expect them to do it, and not charges for things that we're not supposed to be charged on. And obviously, that is also based on how well our design is done. So, if our designer did their job and there's not a lot of omissions or errors or things they left out or quantities that are incorrect, we should have a very reasonable engineer's estimate, which means we should, you know, reasonably be able to expect the contractor to do the work we ask them to do. But we ultimately have to make sure they do that.
Okay. I appreciate it. I'm sure you're going to make sure that you're doing the due diligence on this guy, too. So, I appreciate that. And with that, Madam Mayor, unless somebody else has anything to say, I will move to approve.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve item K.
Please vote. Motion passes unanimous.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to item number four, public comments. For the people sitting over there. This is the time when persons in the audience wishing to address the city council regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. Please complete the speaker card in the back of the room and present it to the city clerk so that you may be recognized. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the city's council's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters at the time such comments are made. The city council shall not discuss or take action relative to any general public comment.
We have one speaker card, Glenda Chavez.
Stepping in for Glenda Chavez. My name is Peter Babos. I'm on the board of the Norco Area Chamber of Commerce, and we just wanted to make sure that everybody knew about the first responder appreciation luncheon, which is this October 16th at Nellie Weaver Hall at, between 11:30 and 1:00. And it's going to be a great event, and we want to give thanks and appreciation to our first responders, and everybody is welcome, and we hope you can make it. And there's more information on flyers out in the back.
All right. Thank you. No other cards? All right. So, we will move on to item number five, our legislative matters. No new evidence will be heard from the public as the public hearing has been closed regarding the item listed. So, do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
They're second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 5A.
Please vote. Motion passes unanimous.
All right. Moving on to item number six, which is our discussion and action items. The order of presentation for discussion items will be as follows. We'll have a staff report and presentation, council questions for staff. We will then have public speakers in favor, against, and neutral. It will come back to council for discussion and action. Our item this evening is a professional services contract for trail maintenance services, and Chad will be giving the report for this this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, tonight, we're going to talk about trail maintenance. This is a continuation of a process that's been going on since the budget cycle, actually well before that. The STUC Committee has worked diligently on developing a trail maintenance, comprehensive trail maintenance, maintenance plan for Norco if funding became available. With passage of measure R, that's become a viable potential revenue source for a program which the Citizens Oversight Committee authorized an allocation of funding based off staff requests to begin a trail maintenance program. And that was an amount of $500,000, which the city council ultimately acknowledged and approved that request as part of the budget for this fiscal year. So, what we are now bringing forward to you is our efforts to find a contract company to begin those services, and we are endeavoring to do a multi-year contract to start that process. So, real quick, we'll go through our program. So, just some quick background, the city has about 101 miles of trails internally. That doesn't include the trails up in the nature areas or down in the riverbed. About 66 miles of bridle or engineered trails around the whole city, about 25 miles of soft-shoulder trails or non-engineered trails, about 10 miles of backyard trails. And again, as indicated, there was adopted a trail maintenance budget this year for the first time of $500,000 using measure R. And then just some quick examples, a general soft-shoulder trail, basically it's one that doesn't have, it's not framed in, it doesn't have curbing gutter, it has no structure, so it materially easily gets moved around. And there's commonly a lot of items in the way, whether it's trees or, in this case, a hydrant right in the middle or Edison poles, things like that. So, it's not, versus an engineered trail, which, again, normally is, it's a clear, straight path. It's defined, we have a clear delineation between the parkway and the adjacent property, and it's a lot easier to maintain because you have a straight shot. And then we have the backyard trails, which are a whole different discussion as far as how they get maintained, which is currently, right now, the property owner's responsibility. Adjacent to each side of that trail there, they have 50% requirement to maintain, i.e. remove the weeds or debris that might come in there. So, that's a current area, and by ordinance, that's the residents' responsibility at this time to take care of that. So, as part of the program, when we developed the comprehensive trail maintenance plan, it was, we developed a minimum requirement. If we had funding, what was the minimum thing we would want to at least try to achieve on an annual basis? So, for bridle trails, that was, and this, again, for the first year, it's to bring it up to standard, so there's a lot of work that needs to be done to bring these trails. And I should say, it's outside the LMDs. Most of the LMDs currently have trail maintenance ongoing. That's done by BrightView, and that's funded through the fees the LMDs pay, the assessments. Only one of them, which is LMD 1, does not have trail maintenance as part of the assessments they pay. So, that's only, the only LMD that doesn't have that. So, our goal is to, on the non-LMD areas that don't have maintenance, to grade and add DG as needed and compaction, bring them up to a minimal standard. It won't be the engineered standard, that's new construction, but a minimum standard, so that it can be maintained on an annual basis much easier. Then, again, we would expect the, after that first year, which will, quite a bit of work will be required because we're going to be grading, bringing back material in, adding DG, et cetera, removing some items that are in the way, maybe bushes or some trees, et cetera, whatever it might be. So, we'll do quite a bit of work, but then we anticipate maintenance costs should decline the following year because we've done most of the work in year one. Soft-shoulder trails, pretty much the same thing. We'll simply be, but they will be graded, remove any ruts and add any DG as needed and compaction. Backyard trails, as we indicated, are not part of this maintenance program, so we won't touch them. So, RFE process, staff issued an RFP to obtain competitive bids for trail maintenance. We received two proposals that were submitted. One was by BrightView, the existing landscaper in the current LMDs, and the other was by Nova Landscape Group. Staff reviewed each of these proposals and conducted interviews with each agency. We want to understand how they're proposing based off of RFP, which required them to follow as a minimum the standards outlined in our comprehensive maintenance plan. How would they propose to do maintenance in Norco? What was their rationale and ideas? And did they have any alternatives or additional augmentations they wanted to offer and suggest in their proposal? So, we really wanted to ask them, based off their experience, what would they do, understanding our desires and needs to upgrade our trail system. Based off those discussions and after getting resubmittals on data and information they wanted to provide, changing their quotes and cost per square foot on what they're proposing to do, staff considered the information and determined that Nova Landscape Group has the most responsive. Nova clearly understood what we wanted. They were very responsive to all our questions and ideas of how we can bring our trail system up to a minimum standard, and they came up other alternatives that they thought the city would be interested in as an add-on if we wanted to raise that level beyond our minimum. One was by Brightview, the existing landscaper in the current LMDs, and the other was by Nova Landscape Group. Staff reviewed each of these proposals and conducted interviews with each agency. We want to understand how they're proposing based off of RFP, which required them to follow as a minimum the standards outlined in our comprehensive maintenance plan. How would they propose to do maintenance in Norco? What was their rationale and ideas? And did they have any alternatives or additional augmentations they wanted to offer and suggest in their proposal? So we really wanted to ask them, based off their experience, what would they do, understanding our desires and needs to upgrade our trail system. Based off those discussions and after getting resubmittals on data and information they wanted to provide, changing their quotes and cost per square foot on what they're proposing to do, staff considered the information and determined that Nova Landscape Group as the most responsive. Nova clearly understood what we wanted. They were very responsive to all our questions and ideas of how we can bring our trail system up to a minimum standard, and they came up other alternatives that they thought the city would be interested in as an add-on if we wanted to raise that level beyond our minimum, where we didn't get that level of information or interest in providing alternatives from Brightview. So we really felt that they provided a menu of sorts of what council could consider tonight and what level you wanted to bring that level of maintenance into our, all our existing trails we have now. And a quick review, and this was provided in the staff report, and just a real quick description. So what, this is Nova's presentation of how they proposed the materials. So our minimum requirement was, our goal and our standard was, do all the trails annually, touch them at least once, and those are all the bridle trails. The soft-shoulder trails would be touched at least once every three years. Because at the time when we wrote the program, there was a lot of appurtenances, things in the way that it would be difficult to get through all the soft-shoulder trails in one year if you didn't remove all those impediments that are there. So we thought if we could get through the soft-shoulder trails every three years, that would be our goal. That's our minimum. So what Nova pointed out in their proposal is that, was basically what if? And in the yellow on the second column down there basically indicates that, you know, if they didn't provide us any materials, and that was DG, and they gave us a proposal that basically said if they provide all the DG that's needed, here's a cost to it. And if they didn't provide the DG, i.e. if Norco provided it, here's your cost. So in the yellow is, there actually proposing if they did all the trails in year one, and they took that burden and they think they can do that, if they did it all, there's your base price. So if no materials provided by them, we would provide the materials that were necessary. And right now, their guesstimate, and it is a true guesstimate, of how much DG would be needed is about 1,200 tons. In contrast, Brightview's, when they initially did their proposal, they thought we needed 20,000 tons, and then they reduced it down to about 60, I forgot what it was, it was 11,000 tons. So you see, it's a moving target that no one's really sure. But the one thing we did know is that both agencies, their cost to provide that DG is higher than our cost to provide it to them. So we immediately took that out of the project to say, we'll provide you all the DG when needed and where we can control it. So we automatically made that determination, but they wanted to highlight if you wanted to do all the trails, which is the bridle and soft-shoulder, their cost year one, for year one on any of this work is all reconstruction. It's not maintenance, it's simply going through and reconstructing the trails and getting them up to a minimum standard. They estimated their cost would be about $470,000. And again, that estimate is based off some assumptions. It assumes an average of a 10-foot trail, not 12, because again, some of them are very short or narrow in others, so that's a reasonable average. So that number, just so you know, could change. Once we get through the first year, we'll get our true linear footage, is that staff is always going to go through and measure ourselves after they get a section done. We go back, verify, agree to that linear footage, and now we have it documented every year, that's the number you're going to bill us towards. So there's certainly a lot of work and documentation that's been done in year one, and we'll have much truer numbers when we're done. And we'll also have much truer numbers, you know, going, you know, every quarter of really how this is working out, how is the budget? We can come back to council and report whether we're staying on budget, where we think it's going to get, it's going to be less, is it going to probably like to go over or rejecting? There's a lot of unknowns here, but we think this is a reasonable number as far as quantifying how much it'll be. The green section is if we end up doing the base minimum, which is do all the bridle trails, get them done, but stick with the minimum standard of doing a third of the soft-shoulder trails a year, with the idea is you get through all the soft-shoulder trails within three years of this contract. That's what your cost would be on an annual basis, which is about 300, under $350,000. So, and so basically, their dollar number per square foot in year one is basically almost 14 cents, and that's their work, no materials, the cost to do that work. So you have a scenario depending what you want to spend and what you get. So you're talking about, in the green scenario, if you go with only the minimum, you'd still have about 16 miles of soft-shoulder trails not touched after year one. That would be, you know, people would potentially be wondering, why didn't this section get touched? Versus if we get it all done in year one, you get the largest impact, the largest visual impact of how the money from measure R was used, and we say, we accomplished this. But it's a choice. There's a clear dollar difference when you're doing it with the, all the trails or a portion that obviously council needs to consider. Then after we do the first year, again, assuming we do, in this case scenario, the yellow scenario is we do all the trails, then we get into just a maintenance cycle. The cost dropped down, and now if you're doing, if you've done all the trails and now you're in a maintenance where you, which you're back to the minimum, you're touching it once a year where it gets groomed and rolled, removed any material, but they're only at that one trail once a year, and that's all they do. That's the minimum standard in our ordinance, or our maintenance plan, excuse me. Then that cost is $329,000. If you're doing the same thing and it's just the bridle trails, and then we're doing the other third soft-shoulder trail and now upgrading that portion that wasn't done the year before, that's $244,000. But you can see the unit price on a maintenance cost goes down to basically 10 cents a square foot. So that's from year two on of how that would be done and how they would propose that. And again, we always continue to provide DG as needed, and year two, we expect that to significantly drop, and it would only increase because of rain issues and things get eroded. But in most of these areas where we're doing work, the erosion isn't as bad because, versus the hills, which have obviously big issues with steep slopes. Then they came up with a third scenario, which was basically do ongoing maintenance. So after you've done year one and you've rehabilitated all the trails, you now go into the futures. Well, do you want it to touch it once and only once a year? Or do you want to go ongoing maintenance, meaning they are available all year long to maintain the trails? And basically, that is a cost, as indicated here, of $400,000 a year versus if you only do a portion of the trails, which is almost $300,000. And the idea behind that is that they're here all year round doing touch-up throughout the city as needed, meaning they're, they'll go places four or five times if they have to because it's got constant weed growth growing in the trail, they're going to be there to remove it. If there's rutting going on, we basically just give them a work order and say, hey, we need you to go fill this area and regroom it because it's gotten worn out. There's not a limit on that. But they still, once a year, still go through and do a groom and a compaction of every trail once, but now you still have an ongoing, continuous maintenance where they're available and maintaining the trails. And so for us, it was, you know, at least we have options rather than the base, and that's what we were attracted to, what Nova was providing and what they said they can do. So staff recommendations after considering what was available is that for year one, we think it's a huge value to be able to say we've done all the trails as the biggest visual impact if we authorize the contractor to do all the trails in the first year and get it done. I think that'll have a big impact and show a great value for the measure R funds that have become available. And then on year two, again, our recommendation is do the ongoing maintenance and have them in-house, so they're here all the time, they're not just touching it once. And one of the benefits we can do is we can, we can do this two different ways, is we could choose for year two on is to either go with this option, have maintenance year round, and if we determine through that process that there really wasn't a lot of additional maintenance that was necessary, that year two, we just go back to a traditional maintenance and touch it once a year, and we already know what that scenario will cost. Or we can do the opposite, we can take year two and do a touch-it-once, you've already rehabilitated all the trails, there shouldn't be a whole lot of ongoing maintenance that's needed, and barring any rain that creates a lot of growth. Again, if that occurs, they're not available to handle that unless it's an extra. So that would be an extra on a regular touch-it-once-a-year scenario. So, and you're well aware, if we do get rains, it becomes a jungle out there, and who takes care of it, et cetera. So we could potentially do year two and say, we're going to want to touch it once a year, and if it turns out after that year, or part of that year, that we really are struggling and we recognize that we need the ongoing maintenance, rather than paying a higher price potentially for extra work and basically doubling out what we're paying out, we can change it in year three and go, hey, you know what, we want to, we want to go to year round. So it's not like an either-or, we can choose what we want, and it's really, you know, a choice of the council if you want to go with year on maintenance from the beginning in year two, or you want to wait on it and kind of see really how much we truly need to do right after we've really groomed and repaired all these trails. Again, as I indicated before, the DG will be provided to the city, by the city, and to control maintenance costs. In this scenario, just so you're aware, if we do do all the trails, again, only what was budgeted was the $500,000. Because it's unknown, again, I've got numbers between, we need almost $50,000 of DG in year one to almost $400,000 of DG in year one, depending on which proposal you're looking at. So we really don't know how much we're going to need. In this scenario, we'll likely have to go back to measure R to ask for additional funding for purchase of DG to make sure that we are meeting the needs of the project. But we don't have to do that right away. Again, the $470,000 is for a full year's worth of work. We can, we have money there, we can provide DG for the first six months because the budget's there, and if we need to go back, we say, we already projecting, we need more money, go back to measure R, ask and explain why we need that additional funding to complete the project because we've, it's just a lot of DG we've needed. But I want to make sure that was clear, that's, that $470,000 is basically for the full amount of the budget that has already been allocated. We would need it probably at some point to ask for more money for, because of the DG And lastly, as indicated before, trail maintenance would exclude the LMDs except for LMD1, which does not right now have trail maintenance as part of their funding mechanism. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Also, the representatives from the contractor are here to answer any questions you may have of them directly.
Does council have any questions of staff?
Chad, go back to that last slide there, please. Up there, year one, consider grooming all the trails. Does that mean that that's, they're just going to do it once? Are they going to do it all year round to keep them maintained?
So in year one, it's a reconstruct, so they're going to touch every trail once to reconstruct it, and then they're going to just keep moving through the city, reconstruct the trails, but they're only going to touch it that once because it's a ton of work to do to get that all done in a year. So we just viewed year one as just a reconstruct, you touch it, get it done, get it into a condition that's acceptable, and then get the rest of the trails done for that year. Year two is where the maintenance starts.
Okay, and in that year one, say we get a lot of rain like we had this year. Now, you talk about maintenance, that includes keeping the weeds, keeping the trail free of weeds and groomed and everything all over town? Would they do that, cut the weeds on a regular basis because every time it rains, them tumble weeds and everything else jumps up there again right quick?
Right, and then, and again, it's, it's, in year one, we did not consider other maintenance. We looked at as, we need you to get through the city as quick as you can because it's a lot of mileage of trails and upgrade the trails to a minimum standard. We didn't, we looked at, that's our only goal in year one, and I recognize in year one, you could get rain and all of a sudden, you've groomed a trail and now you've got growth. We'd have to talk with the contractor about what additional cost they would charge us to do that weed removal. In year two on, in the scenario of ongoing maintenance, which we're recommending, they would take care of any growth that occurred in the trail at any time.
Right, okay.
But year one is a little bit different because we're spending all our energy and money and efforts just to get it reconstructed into a usable condition, and then year two and three and on, it's really the maintenance cycle, you know, the way we've looked at it. We didn't look at it the way of, well, what if you did the trail and weeds grew up? And are they going to take care of it in year one? The answer is no.
Okay, and that's just, the weeds just inside the trail, or you're going to get them over by the trail fence? Because, you know, they grow pretty fast along the outside edge of the fence.
Our intention is from road edge to the back end of the trail, is what we've talked about, and it depends on the type of trail. A soft-shoulder trail, we look at as all of it.
Right.
Because again, that's just, there's no structure there, so we expect all that to be maintained as they go through that. A bridle trail, it's a little bit different, depends on the area. We've had some bridle trail areas where they have a shoulder and it's not being maintained and weeds are growing out of the plants or the bushes that are there. We didn't look at that as the responsibility of the contractor because the resident, or in this case, per ordinance, they're supposed to do it.
Right.
So we're trying to recognize that we're looking for the maintenance portion of the trail and focus on that and not necessarily take the whole burden of responsibility of the residential requirement to at least maintain the parkway. So if there's an established parkway with landscaping, it's really the residents' responsibility to try to maintain that free of weeds or debris. We're focusing on the trail, especially if something's growing in there, materials, that's what they're focusing on. But the soft-shoulder, that annually requires work because that debris gets moved underneath the trail fence because there's no structure there, and they have to keep bringing that back anyway. So they're going to be really maintaining it, grooming it, getting those weeds out of the way.
Okay, thank you.
Chad, so this is strictly trail, nothing with the fence, correct? All right, no maintenance on the fence, no, okay. Because Bill's sitting back there, he's looking at me. The DG, in your paperwork, you call it stabilized DG. Is that the wax-coated DG?
No.
Okay, so are we getting gray, red, or gold? Because there is variations in the cost and how long they stay. If you're getting the gray, it's junk. Just telling you. I mean, it is, it washes out, that's what we've been buying.
To be candid, I haven't talked with staff about what color we would get.
It's not the color, it's how it, you're, in your paperwork, you listed stabilized DG. If you call it stabilized DG, it may have a wax coat so it binds.
Right, that's not, I don't believe that's the intent of our RFP and the information we indicated in there.
Okay, because, I mean, that's what's listed.
Right.
It's a stabilized DG, which is if you roll it and pack it, it's like, it stays. It won't wash out as much, but it's very expensive.
I'm going to apologize for my naivete about DG.
No, well...
Because I candidly, I know, when I think of stabilized DG, I'm thinking of Nextpave, which is the DG that binds together versus, to me, everything else, not, that is just DG.
You're correct. Stabilized DG is one of the Nextpave, that's their brand name. But there is a variation in the DG, and the stuff that's, we've been getting is basically the gray, which most people buy, and that's what you see going down into our drains and washing out because it doesn't stabilize. It's sand, essentially what it is, and it washes out. Whereas you go up to the various color and you just say red is higher end and then gold's the highest, and it bonds. I mean, it, once you pack it and roll it and tighten it and water it, it's not coming out, it stays. So when we look at this and we look at our cost, those are the things we need to look at is, are we buying the right material? And this goes back to, for the landscapers and for the trail maintenance guys, is how often, you know, we just, they're going to have to, if it had a washout, why is it washing out? And I know Brian's dealt with this stuff for a long time, is, why are we putting the right material on those trails?
Right.
So that's one of the things I like to look at. And I'm glad you changed on LMD1. And this goes back to, not so much this contract, but, and when we look at the measure R funding, there are approximately, other than if you exclude LMD1, there's 800 homes and the other four LMDs. And I know on the LMDs, we pay for our trail maintenance, but let's face it, I mean, the measure R money is supposed to be applied citywide. And the way I look at it, just because I live up there and I, yes, I do live up there, where I have an LMD, and I'm paying almost 800 and some dollars, over $800 a year, that. That doesn't mean that some of that measure R money should not be included in helping us maintain our trails up there, too, just in future, not asking for it now, but just be cognizant of that. So we should be, because it should, it's been applied citywide, not just that. So DG, they're not going to take care of the fence, so that's it, thank you.
Other questions of staff?
So Ted's on the DG thing. Would you put your little cost chart back up there? And I have other questions in no exact order. But, so, in your bid documents, the contractor's bidding $40 a ton for a certain level of DG. The city can buy it for $25 a ton. Right. But I'll agree with Ted that... But I'll agree with Ted that we're buying the lesser quality at that number.
Correct.
Okay. So I think that'll be more of a question for the contractor also is, what, what grading of the DG is he proposing for $40 a ton? And if it's stabilized, Nexpave, buy it all from him.
Yeah, for $40, sure.
And it, but if he followed your bid documents that said stabilized, I will assume that that's what he included at this point. So you, you call for inspections of the, of the work. How much staff time and cost is allocated in our overall budget to, to cover that?
In, in this budget?
In this budget, I see zero.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, it's basically, it's, it's now other duties as assigned. It's basically, it's going to be on Terry, our superintendent, or Derek, our supervisor, to go through, especially in the first year, we need high level review and determination that, that number one, the trails, when they say they finished a section, you know, between block to block, that we go out, inspect it, make sure it meets our minimum expectations. And then we also verify the linear footage that's been done. Because we want to make sure that we're not being overcharged, et cetera. So it's, we very much understand the importance of this program, especially on year one, because it will be the determination of future linear footages because we're not going to change them. This is what we agreed to and that's what we expect to build in the future, so.
Let's stay back on the staff. Is that going to, or whatever staff member's going to do those inspections, does his normal daily tasks, are they going to suffer from that? I mean, I'm just curious, how much, how much time do you think we're, we're looking at? Weekly, bi-weekly, monthly, for additional staff time?
We, in talking with Terry and Derek, the gentleman in question, they don't believe this is going to be an overly burdensome process in that, you know, they have a, an expectation of what the trail should look like and how they should be constructed and the amount of materials that should be used. So it shouldn't be, for them, it's not a big learning lesson because they've been, when they can, maintained a trail as good as they can. But now, they, again, they see this as extreme high value because it's going to free them up of not having to do miscellaneous pet projects because they have a on-call, basically contractor to help maintain these trails.
We could use the time where we're going out and fixing a trail.
Yeah, like I said, for them, they're, what they, what they're glad about is they're not taking the bodies that are currently used to do the minimal trail work we do now away from other work we could do. So we view this as a positive overall and not a burden. And believe me, Terry and Derek would not be shy about saying, we need another body just to manage these guys. And they've never said that once, or give me that indication, I've asked that. So they, they believe they can handle it.
Okay. So Andy, this may be part for you also, is that, right now, our ordinance is, property owner takes care of the trail in front of their, in front of their property, maintains it.
Well, they maintain and keep clear of weeds and debris.
Right.
The trail is not their responsibility to maintain as far as how it's structured.
With DG and et cetera.
Right. We are supposed to take that.
Right.
When we bring DG to them, if need be, and we'll lay it out, they'll, they'll compact it if they want to. But it's really weeds and debris that they're supposed to maintain per ordinance.
So my thought is, because I, I don't know why I see this coming down the, the road at us, is some form of informational or educational information to the, the property owners because I have a feeling that, once I see somebody cleaning my trail, it's out of my mind forever. And I'm, I'm going to assume I have no more responsibility with it. So have we thought about any type of education or re-education?
We met on this just this past week.
Oh, okay.
So yeah, we'll continue to provide public education to residents regarding their responsibilities for maintaining their parkway. As a matter of fact, we have an item that is going to the Streets and Trust Commission next week.
Yes.
I believe, to do specifically with that process. And assuming that the Streets and Trust Commission approves that, then that will be coming to the city council in terms of what that process entails.
Okay. Thank you. Then, contract wise with this, this is Measure R funds and, and right now, we're looking at going out for three years, correct?
Correct.
That, based on this funding source is, is tied to tax revenue. And if, if, let's say next year, the tax revenue is not what we anticipate and we have to reduce this, are we free to exit this contract at any time? Or are we locked in for the two years or three years?
No, we're free to exit anytime. We've indicated in the contract itself, under the term, that this, that this project is subject and funded by Measure R and the city can choose to elect to terminate the agreement on an annual basis.
Okay. And, and we can also change scenarios within the timeframe.
Yes, there's nothing that precludes us from, we're not tied into if we go with one scenario and go back to another.
Okay. So my last question for right now is.
Also add to that, I think one of the recommendations that Chad mentioned there is electing the level of service for year two. One of those things that we've talked about, I think Measure R revenues are subject to review every year and appropriations made year two. I believe, although we can cancel the contract, I don't think we should be committing to any level of, of funding for year two either at this, at this time.
Last question for the moment is, we have sustainable practices in recycling. And so all the, let's just call it, all the green waste, the weeds, whatever, that are cleaned off the trail by the contractor, will be hauled and tipped at an outside facility.
Correct.
And those tipping fees are included in the contractor's numbers. There's no additional charge to either take it to a landfill or the recycling or any tipping fees?
No, we wouldn't pay anything other than the square footage rate to do any of this work.
I want to make sure that, that's all included in this number.
If, if it's not, we're still not going to pay it because it's not a number that's been identified that we agreed to.
Okay.
So even if they came and said that, oh, by the way, I need the $200 a month for my green waste, we would say no because it was not part of the contract.
Okay. And so that, that tonnage that goes to the recycler, can we use that for our diversion rate?
Typically, what occurs, if you're taking it to an outside diverter, you're, you're identifying where it's come from.
Right.
And the location of where it's being taken is, should be reporting that to the state for what materials came to their location, typically.
Does that, I don't know if that's answering my question.
Yes.
It, it is. It would help us in our diversion rate.
That's my, it's my belief. Again, I'd have to investigate and make sure, depending on.
Would you?
The agency they're taking it to, how they report it to the state. But they usually will document how much material came from which city and then that gets reported to the state.
Okay. Thank you, Chad. Thank you, John.
Any other questions?
I do have a little bit of a concern about the education of people. I hope we can make that work. I'm a little bit concerned about that, that they still understand they have to take care of the parkway and stuff, but I think that a lot of that'll work out. What I do want to say though, is that this is actually a very extraordinary evening because we've actually been working towards this for 50 years. 50 years to finally have enough money to truly take care of every trail in the city in Norco. And I'm not certain why.
He picked it for it when he was in college.
Way earlier. But I want to thank staff and I want to thank the residents of Norco. And this is amazing. And it's really something that we should be proud of. 50 years and we're there. And so it's really exciting. So I appreciate all the questions and I think we'll, you know, we'll tweak it, but thank you very much. Thank you to the Measure R folks, let them know that this is, this is extraordinary. Brian, all the work you've done. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I got one other question.
Yes.
Only because I hit it here in my notebook. The trails, and you're talking about the number, and Brian can chime in if he, if those, you said you were not going to do the River Park trails, which.
This is just the city, inner city trails.
So what about the trail, the trailheads that lead down to the river itself, Front Black River and Corridon, Stagianeri and those?
No.
They're not part of this?
No, they're not, no.
Which?
We, we maintain those now. So we do, in the Parks Department.
Yeah, I know.
And that's very limited now, so, because it's not under contract.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just asking because we've had issues with those trails and I just want to make sure.
For example, Corridon, we can only go about 10 feet before we're on Army Corps property. So it, now over off of River Drive, it's a little bit different. And in those cases, we, we go in only as, as needed basis, otherwise those are more rural, open space type trails.
Okay, but that does not include, okay.
Not included in here. And it's not, it's not even included in our park square footage.
No, I know, there's, why there are issues.
I do want to let, make a note, based, Councilman Hoffman and Councilman Newton say that, that all of these trails in this contract are rolled too. And it's been a long time since we've had that rolling and compaction on trails. And I do think that's going to help a lot with, we have found in the operation maintenance too.
Can I ask a question about that real quick? As far as walkability of trails, will this compaction make them more walkable as well and it won't be like the deep sand or any of that kind of stuff?
Well, yeah, and.
Sure.
Okay.
They're going to be grading it and rolling it, so you're getting as close to, if it was on a reconstruct. It will be, the second year, that ongoing maintenance will be critical to keep it that way though.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
One thing on that note, in their, in their proposal, they, they do call that they will provide a vibratory roller, roller and that they will have a, I don't know if they called it a water caddy or a, they're going to haul water out there. So one of the, and I'm assuming we'll provide the water.
Correct.
But Berwin can comment to that. It's just like sealing a racetrack, as long as they put water to that DG and hit it with a vibratory roller. I think what we'll find is, what we found up like in LMD4, when we get a big rain, that water's just going to sheet off of it. And I think it'll make it easier to walk on it. And the tighter it is, the horses aren't going to, you know, tear it up as bad. But I'll, I'd give that one to Berwin to give you the racetrack part of it.
And like I said, when you go through and you look at your DG, the higher quality DG will pack a lot tighter and, and it'll answer your question, you won't get the breakdown in the sand as much.
Just to add to that, the fines in those higher qualities are tighter. So that's what, that molecule causes it to compact better. The other problem, the other issue with that, and you're, you're correct about the water, that helps in that binding with those molecules and as, and those different fines of decomposed granite. Our ordinance calls for a certain fine. So you can actually go up a little bit, but that fine is really critical in that. So, and also the minimum requirement is a 5,000 pound roller. Just.
Other questions of staff?
We brought up the trees that I planted in front of my house and I lined them where all the trees went, starting in the 1920s, actually in the 1910s. And I'm just wondering, how are we going to handle that? What we're talking about is that, it just happens to be my property, but I, when I lost all my trees because they aged out, I simply planted the trees where they previously had been. Well, now we have a problem because technically they're in the trail. So we have hundreds of trees that are going to be in the trail. So how are we going to deal with that? The other problem is, is during the 50s, 60s into the 70s, we allowed people not to build their properties up, but we actually had them, let them put their houses below the street level. So a lot of us, I mean, we started this in 61 on our street, we actually bermed the front of a lot of properties to protect them. And it didn't help that the storm drains went into the wrong spot, particularly on my street. So the problem you have is, if you remove those berms, you're going to flood those houses. And so how do we make that decision now? Do we make it later? Where do we want our trees to be planted? In line with the existing trees? Or are we going to begin to set back new trees as they're planted?
It's a very good question and it's a very broad question that is going to need some lengthy discussion amongst counsel. But in our, well, we recognize that and we identify that as a problem of many different types of encroachments into the right of way. And our, our first year is really, is to, we've indicated to contractors on, it's really, a lot of it's in the soft shoulder trails. It's not in the bridle trails because they're defined areas. So we're really talking about the soft shoulder trails and the issues there. And we said, look, as you're going through, your requirement is to do the best you can. And we told them, look, you need to plan and budget and give us a reasonable dollar number per square foot is because you're going to be coming in and out. Some areas, you're going to be hand operating equipment instead of having a large tractor or roller going through an area because it's not defined. We said at the same time, because the expectation is they're going to use our work order system to, to document every section of trail, document how it looked before and after, and document also the encroachments or the issues that they experienced. So that staff documents those and then develops basically a list of areas of concern that we can bring back to council and talk about it. It goes, what is our ultimate goal? Because as you, as you indicated, you know, one of our, you talked about the berm and trying to protect your properties. The problems with that is, to be candid, is that is actually against what the municipal code allows. You are supposed to allow cross lot drainage through your properties. By berming it, you actually push it to an adjacent neighbor or somebody else. And, but again, that's why we've got to kind of figure out and give you all the information of the different gazillion scenarios out there, because there's not just one, and try to find out what and how we do anything about those areas at all. I mean, that's the honest question, is do we do anything? Do we go through that discussion, that potential fight with the residents who may want things that's been there forever? Why are we doing this now and who's going to do it? Do we make them do it? Do we remove it? We've had that discussion and it's happened in the past with RDA, an attempt to do that that didn't go very well. So right now, we're not trying to tackle that issue in year one. We just want to get an improvement best we can. You'll see the best improvement on the bridle trails that exist because it's clear and easy how we can do them. The soft shoulder trails, again, we're going to quickly find out how much of an improvement we can do. We're trying to pull that dirt out of the street for sure, get it back into the trail. But we're going to thread the needle, trying to figure out what we're going to do between different impediments. And again, some of those are the cities. It's hydrants, it's telephone poles, there's all kinds of stuff. So there's not, we're not pointing fingers at any one person or thing, but it's something we have to recognize and get realistic of far as, and the contractor's going to learn a lot. He may come back going, yeah, my number isn't even close to what it should be because it took me 10 times long to do this, but we'll talk about that in year two. Year one is what it is. But yes, that is something we need to, to look at as a horizon thing, but I want to gather the information after a good year of, or at least six months of operation to really kind of solidify what we have to deal with and then kind of get some honest opinions from the council of, what do you think we should do? You know, we'll come with our thoughts, but it is something we'll have to deal with at some point.
For the record, the berm is in front of the house. It then goes down the driveway. It's not like we're blocking it.
Okay.
So, and that's, that's kind of, I mean, in terms of water, that's just kind of have to.
Kevin, based upon your comments, I'm already processing the abatement to.
I'll move the frigging trees, what can I tell you? My house is up for sale now.
Yes, sir.
Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Not to bust your chops, but you made a comment that, you know, that the contractor may find different encroachments, impediments, that within year two, he may want to come back and, or this year or next year, come back and raise his costs, which somewhat troubles me that if, and if the contractor wants to answer this, that it would seem to me that a prudent contractor before he would do his bid would review the, the job and that is travel all the trails and, and realize that, what impacts are in those trail systems before the job's bid. So if, if we were to see, to me, if he were to come back and go, oh no, I need more money because there's a fire hydrant in the middle of this trail, no. You should have been aware of what you were bidding when you bid it.
And I believe the contractor does. He actually identifies some of those impediments.
Well, I'm just taking exception to your, your statement.
And again, it was, it was meant to be just kind of a.
I know. It's not like my neighbor's trees.
But yes, I, I believe the contractor's well aware of that. He identified some of these impediments in his own proposal, highlighting some of the issues that, that they identified and showed pictures of those impediments or other. issues that they identified, showed pictures of those impediments or other issues that are occurring, like water coming from backyards and flooding out the, you know, the DG, et cetera, and how the city plans to remedy that because they can't do anything or fix it because it's going to get ruined right away. So I think they're very educated, understand, they've looked around and saw the issues, so I think they're understanding what it is, but they said, we're all going to learn a lot in this first year because we've never done it, so this is exciting.
Chad, when he went through there and checked all that out, did he make a list of the ones that had encroachments?
The contractor at this point?
Yeah.
There's hundreds and hundreds of encroachments throughout the city.
I know, but we got a list of that where code enforcement can go take care of that because I remember, and Greg, you'll remember this too, several years ago when the city spent $100,000 to remove the encroachments out of the trails, and in two weeks, they said they were all done, which I've never believed them. I don't believe it because we had a list of about 200 and something, and I don't believe there's any way they could got them removed.
Two years.
Yeah, spent $100,000. No, we're not joking. That's true. That really happened about 12, 15 years ago, before I got on council, but I know they're going to run into some things there, like railroad ties and asphalt across the trail and everything else.
Yes, some of the...
Asphalt across the trail and everything else.
Some of the material or things that might be in the trail, as a staff level, we're going to make the determination of things that can be removed in that timeframe. I mean, frankly, there's some folks that have boulders in the parkway or trail that are going to be removed because they can't be there. It's a liability. If a car hits it, it's not something the city put there. But overall, like I indicated before, as far as the actual physical encroachments, which are a larger, bigger discussion, we're going to bring those back to council as a discussion item of how they would like to address those higher level issues and whether we remove them or how we remove them or not. Some of the lower level stuffs like railroad ties, we can pull those out. That's not an issue because it's, we can pull that out. I'm looking more at the physical. They've got pilasters in the way. They're two feet in the trail. I can't, or not planning to just come out and just send code enforcement out, because again, I want to make sure in the end that that is a discussion council has had and supports and recognizes that that's going to be a long-term process and which I'm happy to go through and be part of. But we just don't want to just blindly do that in the first year, and our project gets mired down in debates and upset neighbors, and we'd rather do it after we get the first year done.
Yeah, I just didn't want the contractor then to be running into any problems there that should have been solved, you know? Thank you.
All right, we are going to move to our public speakers at this time.
Your one speaker, Bill Naylor.
Mayor and council, I'm kind of surprised, I would have thought we'd had several speakers on it, but that's okay. I do want to congratulate staff on the work that they have done preparing this information. There's a lot of stuff that you're looking at, and I'm pretty much in favor of pretty much everything that was there. I am a little bit concerned, I know, just as some of you have indicated, about the impediments that are on the trail. I know I ride the trails every week, and there's everything from just gravel, where residents who put just gravel on the trail, to we have trees that, if you don't hug your horse, you can't, you'll end up on the ground. So I'm not quite sure. It sounds like that the contractor will be addressing a lot of those types of things, but I just wanted to thank you for looking at this and trying to get it taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so it's going to come back to council for discussion and council action. I'll just say my two cents, I would prefer that we only do one year because of the nature of where the funds are coming from and that it's the Measure R committee, and I feel like a couple times, we are potentially put in the cart before the horse, and so I want to make sure we're doing due diligence with our Measure R committee, so that's my two cents.
Mayor, are you saying that, do you support going with the full materials, all trails, that 518,000 total for the first year?
Oh, I have no discussion on which contract we approve at this time, I just...
I guess I would call that, is that scenario three? But not going into the second year?
This is year one, right here. This is the first year. This is the first slide.
Okay.
So that's what we're discussing right now is year one. If I correct, I think what the mayor was indicating is to only approve a one-year contract and then bring it back on an annual basis because it's in respect to asking, requesting money for Measure R for support of continuing the project.
Correct.
And which then go to council.
So what your question is, which one?
Well, the 470 and the 518, that's just playing with the quality of the DG, so, correct?
Correct.
Right.
And the amount, I mean, it's also about the amount, it's not...
And who's going to know till you start buying it?
Yeah, and that's why we want to make sure we control that, and we would provide the DG.
Just as a note too, it only covers one-third of the soft cover trails that first year. So you're not getting, you have two-thirds of your soft shoulder trails that will not be done until the following years. So you're only funding one-third of your soft shoulder trails.
I thought we had an option to do all trails the first year.
Yeah, if you choose the green scenario, that's if you only touch a third. If you do the yellow scenario, all the trails, get everything.
The yellow one is everything, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilman Hoffman?
Yeah, well, I'm supporting the yellow part of it. And I think that one of the other reasons is, this is what we promised the residents with Measure R, that streets and trails, and that's the biggest priority, and this is going to be the visual impact, so.
One thing I'd like to say...
That's where I'm, is the yellow column.
To, just real quick, to be fair to the contractor, one of the things I want to make sure we ask and give an opportunity to talk about is if we do this as a one-year contract, because each contractor is purchasing equipment to accommodate us, because this is dedicated equipment for us, and most of them have assumed a multi-year payback that's factored into their unit price. So I'd like to make sure with the contractor that they're okay with this and recognizing it could be a one-year contract only, and there might not be a second year, and if their number would change if that's the case, especially if we related to equipment.
I think we can have a three-year contract. What we are saying is the amount of the contract on year one, on year two and year three is to be determined.
Yeah, and you'll take that amount, which could be what's been proposed, to Measure R, and it could be more.
Yeah, it could be more, could be less.
Sure.
That's correct.
Right.
So we don't have to go out to do another solicitation.
Yeah, and the assumption is that under any circumstances, there will be some significant amount of maintenance done, whether it's that exact dollar amount or whether it did go to Measure R.
Correct.
Well, the 518 includes the 48,000 for the DG.
Right.
And then the 470 is just no DG.
Have the contractor also explain the DG.
Okay.
Right, and whether we buy it or not.
Yeah, I mean, of course, he's not listening now, but we presumably could buy DG at the higher level as well, maybe we'd get a better price.
Yeah, I mean...
Madam Mayor, I know it's public, you closed the public session, but if, that should be something we should ask, if we can ask the applicant or the contractor is what he's talking about and the type of DG.
The one thing too, just to note, is you're locking in on your square footage price with the contract, and I know that in future years, that price is just going to go up. If we were to re, try to bid it every year, it would go up.
Oh, yeah. I'm in agreement with the three-year contract with the full maintenance. I mean, this is what we sold all the residents on.
If I can, I, this is exactly what we talked about on the ADAC committee, maybe prior to the Oversight Committee, was that at that time, it was averaged around a half a million dollars a year for the trails, and that's kind of what they went on based upon that. I don't think that's going to change anyway, but this is what this city is built on, is the trails, and we have to maintain this, like what Kevin was saying earlier. But if I can, Mayor, I'd like to at least get that answer back on the DG, if we go with the no materials or if we go with the materials list, what the contractor is proposing to kind of DG he's proposing to buy.
And I just asked the contractor, it's non-stabilized DG is what his proposal included.
Well, I don't expect the next page because there's no way he could do it for that price. But if, just the type of quality we're talking about, because it's, again, that's the whole purpose of the DG, is like earlier, is you have different levels, and Brian can remember all the stuff that got mined out of our own Ingles Park quarry and got to the back that wasn't even DG anymore. It was sand, it was rock sand. And people for years thought they were buying DG, and that's what they got, and that's what they put in the quarrels, and they were wondering why it never packed.
Yeah, and actually, it's called fill sand, or what we used to have is moon dirt, and it doesn't meet the qualifying fines. And even, at the state, engineering qualifications for decomposed granite has a certain fine, minimum, that you have to meet, otherwise it has to be categorized as fill sand. And that's really where we got down.
There's one other way to put that, Brian, and that is the oats that pass through the horse, they're usually cheaper.
All right, does council have any other discussion?
Need to take just a step back for a second. I'm in favor of, along with Councilman Newton, I'm in favor of the yellow side, the 518. When we talk about the parkway, though, when the streets of Norca were laid out, there were no parkways. There were trails, and there was a street between them, and there were trails on both sides of the street, and then we decided to have them on one side of the street. When we put in the fencing, did we change our code, and maybe you can answer this, Steve, did we change our code that suddenly we have a parkway on one side of the street? I don't think so.
Well, it depends on the development, because some of the tracks were put in where...
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about, like, I'm talking about the Pedley, Tamaskal, Hillside. Do we have parkways? We don't have parkways. So I think this is, it's not really where we're going to discuss it tonight, but I think it's something we need to think about, because our municipal code doesn't take into consideration, as far as I know, parkways, unless you're up in an LMD. We do not have parkways, and Chad, I mean...
Our, our, I want to make sure I'm going to get this right. Here's the example of a soft shoulder trail, this is Pedley.
Right.
And, and it's based off of...
Yeah, that's where you cut down all the trees.
Right, so, in our, when we look at this trail, you have the trail portion and you have the parkway portion. The point of the parkway, it's just, it's minimal. It's three feet, two feet max, and that varies depending on the type of street. But we still define that, that's outside the trail, as a parkway.
I just want to, I want to make sure it's codified. So when we have that discussion, I want to make sure that we actually have something in our code that delineates between the trail and, because, remember, when all these streets were laid out, the trees, and again, I'll move my trees, I don't have a problem with that. But my point is, is the way that all of our trees are laid out on all the old town streets, they were laid out specifically, that was kind of like the parkway then. So I just think that in the future, when we talk about this, I think we need to codify that's a parkway, because it's kind of a change.
Right. No, I understand, like I said, and it's, we have a, currently have a trail standard that demonstrated as an engineered trail, which includes a curb and gutter, a parkway and the trail. In this scenario, where we look at it is we say, this, if we were going to look at that, we'd say, okay, you have the trail, it's a certain distance, it may not be 12 or not, but you also have a defined area outside the trail fencing before that, and there's still a distance between trail fence and the road edge, that's considered the parkway. Even though it doesn't have curb and gutter, it's still the parkway. You can't do much with it, because it's, in this case, it's very narrow, for others, they have four feet, and they can plant trees, et cetera, and that's really where we love to plant the trees, so they're not in the trail. And that's, again, a future discussion thing of how could we...
Yeah, anyway, I just wanted to, I didn't mean to step back, but I want to make sure that when we do discuss it, we really have to look at what was, what is, and what we want. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And by the way, I am in favor of 518.
Other discussion? I guess I need clarification if we want them to get the DG or if we're going to provide it. So under the 518, they are providing the DG, correct?
Correct.
Correct, I would not recommend that.
Well, and I guess...
I would recommend that we provide the DG, especially in year one.
And Measure R allocated 500,000, is that correct?
Correct.
So, okay.
No, I'm...
Recommending yellow, the top one?
The top yellow is with no materials, meaning we provide the DG, the bottom one is they provide the DG. And that's a number based off of assumed of 1,200 tons, it could be 2,500 tons, or could be less than that, we don't know, but you're paying per ton $40 versus I can bring it and purchase it for 25.
And even with that, there's still the potential that we could go over the 500,000, depending on how much DG needed to be purchased, is that correct?
And depending on the actual square footage that's measured out. So there's two factors where you could pay more or you could pay less.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
I moved it would go along with the 470,000 yellow up there, that part of it.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to select the year one option of no materials, all trails for the amount of just over 470,000 dollars.
Please vote.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item number seven, which is a public hearing. The public hearing will go as follows. We'll have the staff report presentation, council questions of staff, we will open the public hearing, we will then close the public hearing, have council discussion and action. So we will be discussing an entertainment permit, 2019-02, and this will be Mr. King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This is an entertainment permit request for an existing business, the Waterwell Saloon and Restaurant at 986th Street. It's in the C4 zone. The applicant is requesting an entertainment permit that's very much similar to the entertainment permit that was approved for the previous owner of that restaurant. The, there's a whole list of activities, I don't read them all, that was requested in the application, ranging from dancing to singing, live bands, fashion shows, competitions, food competitions, there's a whole bunch of stuff, so, but very similar to what was approved by, for the previous owner of that same restaurant. There are going to be between 1 and 30 participants, it's anticipated, in each of the events. The indoor activities are proposed Monday through Friday from 5:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m., and on Saturday, Sunday, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Then the outdoor activities would be Monday through Sunday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And on that list of activities that they're requesting, most of them are indoors, but there are some outdoor activities like trunk or treat and car shows, that sort of thing. The permitted use in the C4 zone, one of the allowed uses is the consumption of alcoholic beverages. The current owner of the business does have a Type 47 license. We did check with ABC, and the license is current, and the owner... We did check with ABC and the license is current and, and the owner is in good standing with that license. They do have some upcoming events and the owner has come in and obtained approval of special event permits to cover all of those events through October 7th. If this entertainment permit is approved, those events ongoing would then be permitted under the entertainment permit. The, as I indicated, the, this is similar to the entertainment permit that was held by the previous owner. The original entertainment permit was approved by the City Council in 2012. A modification to that permit was approved in 2014 that expanded the list of allowed uses so they wouldn't have to keep coming in all the time requesting special event permits from staff. And then with that modification, the condition was added that the entertainment permit would have to be renewed every year. And the reason for that was that at the time, and it still is the case, this is the only saloon in the city where the service of hard liquor is allowed without a conditional use permit. All the rest of them do have conditional use permits because they're either in the CG zone where it's required or for Saddle sore, which is in the C4 zone, they actually obtained or requested approval back when a CUP was required and it's no longer required now. So the Water Wheel Saloon was the only one that didn't have the CUP. And as a precautionary measure to make sure that there was adequate, adequate control for the city, the one-year renewal was added. And then after the passage of time and it was demonstrated that the previous owner was complying with the requirements of the permit, they obtained approval of a modification two that removed the annual renewal. So the previous permit no longer had the annual renewal requirement, similar to every other saloon in the city. So with, in its consideration on whether or not to approve an entertainment permit, the City Council or the code requires the approval of findings that support the approval of the entertainment permit. The first of which is the permit can be operated within the confines of required laws in the municipal code and, and laws of that the sheriff deals with, they're outside of the municipal code. To the applicant and any other person has not been convicted in court of competent jurisdiction for offenses involving obscene activities and, and that sort of thing and that they've not allowed or permitted acts of sexual misconduct. The third finding is that the normal operation would not interfere with peace and quiet of surrounding residential neighborhoods. And then the fourth is that the applicant has not made it, knowingly made any false or misleading statements in its application. And the project was circulated to the members of the project review board, there were no, including Sheriff's Department and code enforcement, there were no issues brought up. The Sheriff's Department determined that there are no outstanding issues with the current owner and operation of the business and likewise code enforcement verified that there are no current code cases for that business. The, one of the, one of the issues that was adopted with the previous entertainment permit and you have it as an attachment, excuse me, to the resolution is an allowance where the owner can block parking and one drive aisle directly in front of Water Wheel Saloon for its outdoor events. Any other blocking of parking spaces or drive aisles proposed would have to, they would first have to get a special event permit approved from the city. So in, in its review for the ability of the City Council, if it so chooses to be able to adopt the findings, staff is not aware of any false or misleading statements that were provided and we're not aware of any disruptions that have been experienced by other businesses in the center over the last few years by the operation of the entertainment permit by the previous owner and which is what the current owner is, is requesting now, similar to that. So staff's determination was that the findings could be made. Our recommendation is for approval of the entertainment permit and with that I can answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. King.
On this list of activities here.
Yes.
Anything he does, does it have to be listed on there?
It doesn't have to list everything, for instance, not to get weird, but the, one of the, one of the staff members, a woman's staff member looked at the list and said, you list Daisy Dukes, but you don't list the similar whatever it would be for men. That would be allowed even if it's not specifically listed on the list because it's under entertainment, it's under either a fashion show or a competition show. So an individual event itself does not have, have to be specifically listed, but if it's close enough to one of these activities, then it would be covered.
Well, I know, I had been up there a couple of times, I had outdoor fundraisers for certain things and they had pet adoptions that went over really big. I mean, there was a lot of people up there getting pets and everything and I didn't, I didn't know if they had to be listed or not because I didn't see it on the, on the-
That type of event, we, we would look at it and, and call it a covered event, whether it's a competition or a show, it would be covered under one of these categories.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I just clarify, the, the previous owner, we had she out an annual until we give her a permanent one.
Correct.
And you explained this, I hope it didn't get lost in your staff report, but a lot of that had to do with the CUP permit, correct? So that we had some kind of, the other, the other facilities in town, establishments in town have CUP permits that if they violated in, in their operations or did something beyond that, that, that was our only recourse, correct?
The, yeah, the, the previous owner and the modification to where that annual renewal was added was based upon an overabundance of caution, just so that the city would have in its hands a mechanism to enforce if it got out of control. But the reality is with or without the CUP, we still have, if, if, if it came to the worst scenario, we could still entertain a revocation of the entertainment permit, which accomplishes the same thing.
Okay, because what we're talking about is not an annual issuance, this is a permanent issuance, correct? Okay, I just, it's, put it clear. And then, and I don't know if you can answer that, is the applicant going to use the second floor of the building at all?
He's allowed to use the second-
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying, I do.
I don't know, you'd have to-
Yeah, if he gets a chance up there somehow or another, it'd be nice to see it used. But, thank you, Steve.
Steve, you, you just brought up a good point and changed my line of thinking. Originally with that development, okay, the second floor of that building was to be used like as a community meeting room? Do you remember any of that?
Yeah, I do, actually. It was meant to be exactly that, an open banquet room, community room.
Right, it wasn't to be like an, a second floor bar or anything like that. I thought it was community room, meeting room.
Right.
Yeah, a long time ago. So I have a couple of questions, not meaning to be facetious, but after reading your staff report and listening to your report after I've dropped a few IQ points on this, Type 47 license, minors are allowed on the premises. And I'm assuming that it will be, you can have kids there for, with their parents or minors can just come in to participate in any of these events?
The, yeah, the minors can come in, they can be there eating with their, with the adults and they can be participating in the events as well.
But it doesn't say you have to be with your parents, it says minors are allowed on the premise.
Right, well, the assumption is when you're eating there with your family. My, my thinking was they'd be there with their parents, but minors are allowed to be there for the events.
But it doesn't say, you're making an assumption, it just says, Type 47, minors are allowed on the premises. So, you got a 15-year-old kid and he wants to go do the redneck games or the bathing suit and all of that and they can just walk in and do that?
Well, as long as they're, you know, we don't enforce a Type 47 license, that's an ABC license, but as long as they're not being served alcohol.
Interesting. The thing that troubles me on this is, you know, whatever goes on inside is allowable, but the outside activities, the car shows, when we have like the Thanksgiving dinner at Silverado's, they have to submit a separate site plan that shows, okay, I'm going to have some outside entertainment over here, we're going to be serving food over there, but what it addresses is all the life safety concerns, access for police and fire and all the ADA path of travels that, that are also required. I'm leaning towards anything that's exterior, let's say a car show, should be a separate permit so that we can address the life safety issues, the ADA issues, and also that this is, it's all shared parking. So there's nothing to prevent to say, I'm going to have a car show and I'm going to have 300 cars, 300 displays and so now you've taken all the, the shared parking for Thrifty Horse, for Boot Barn, you know, all the way down. So there's nothing that contains this in, in the parking area or nothing that controls it. So that's, that's my biggest concern on anything outside of the building. It should be a separate permit.
Yeah, and that's fine. The way it's written right now, there, there is an area where they're allowed to block parking in a drive aisle and it basically is what the parking would be associated within that shared parking, the, the number of spaces in the drive aisle directly associated with the saloon restaurant itself.
What are those numbers? How many parking stalls?
I have 23 in the diagram.
Okay, so that-
And anything beyond that-
You had a car show, you, you can only take 23 stalls?
Yes, and beyond that, you could still do it, but you have to get a special event permit so that you don't impact the other stores in the center.
So in your project review, did, uh, chief or lieutenant, did you have any concerns on that, blocking the exit?
Not blocking the exit because there's another entry exit that would still be suitable for us to enter the property. Thank you.
I think, I think it'd be advantageous to, to run it through the fire marshal shop now that you bring it up from that point. I mean, I'll be, I'll be right up front, I didn't consider it from that angle, but we could definitely explore that with Sandy in the fire marshal shop.
And then back to the other part of that, in your project review, did you look at your path of travel, your ADA access?
Yes.
That get blocked at all?
No, no, nothing gets blocked, no path of travel to any other buildings in the center and the path of travel to Water Wheel would still have to be maintained open, the Water Wheel building.
So where you, you block out in orange here, these, these spaces, right?
Correct.
Okay. So you just have the, the handicap going into the Water Wheel Saloon, but I'm just, what about the, I guess it's more of the, you need to look at the path of travel through the entire complex, I think. From the other buildings to there, that's kind of why I'm leaning towards, anything outside should be a, a separate permit.
Correct.
That's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? Yes.
Yeah, I'm going to piggyback on what Councilman Newton was talking about. One of the things, and we do this all the time, you see it at shared parking lots, we see that if you go to Home Depot, everybody sits down, the engineer sit and look at a beautiful parking layout, shared parking, we go through there and what do they do during the holiday times? They take up about 40 parking spots to build a Christmas tree park. You go to Walmart to the inside, they do the same, and in the inside, they go, all the fire marshals go through, look through, here's your building, here's your aisles and everything and what happens? You put all their junk to sell in the aisles and if somebody pushes a wheelchair around, I can tell you, if there's a fire, I'm going to have a hell of a time getting out. And I'm not picking on what Rob's doing here, but I'm going to piggyback on, I mean, Councilman Newton's saying here is this is their outside. We've been there and heard the complaints before under the previous owner, when the parking was going across the street and blocking Dr. Williams's place in the, in the rental unit there, he had there. It was always a constant complaint on parking. That was a shared parking lot and if I recall, when this project got approved, that was a major contention was the shared parking along with the retail centers there, there was the pizza place, yeah, there was a pizza place there, the liquor store that was on the corner, all that. And that was even before the rodeo burger was done. They had a problem with parking there. So I, I'm, I don't have a problem with the entertainment permit, but I do have a problem with this permitted parking lot closure because of that situation that we need to look at each event and not just give them the blanket thing because, not that he will do it, but maybe the next manager or the managers, hey, you know, you can't, you can't use those other parking lots, you got, you, all the ones in orange, but the next aisle, oh, you can't use those. Well, that's going to get very confusing and I'm going to go back to the KISS principle on this one. Either you just let lays, so every time you have a different event, you lay it out. That's just my thought on it.
And if, if I could, Madam Mayor, to jump on, the staff doesn't have a problem with changing condition number 11 that just says any, no, no parking or drive aisles are allowed to be blocked. And I need to, on behalf of the applicant, I need to state that this was not his request. This was brought forward because it was similar to the, the permit that was approved for the previous owner. So I'm, I'm, I'm sure he's going to want to get up and speak, but we certainly could just change condition 11 that just says no, no, no parking or drive aisles can be blocked except without the issuance of a special event permit.
Does Council have any other questions?
I guess I kind of disagree. What, what actually occurred is it was during operating hours that they would park across the street and then they were crossing the street. The times I was there and I went to a lot of, of events, they had those spaces near there and it seemed to work out pretty well. What I don't want to do, if we can help it, is not make him every time he wants to do a permit, I don't want to make him have to go through a bunch of rigamarole. 23 spaces, he's pretty much entitled to and generally speaking, every event that I went to was in coordination with all the other businesses, every time. And I also know that when, prior, when, when the property manager was operating it, she tried to put on an event and they shut her down because she had expended out way too far and had created all kinds of, they blocked exits and all kinds of things, you probably recall that. So I think that the 23 is reasonable. They're trying to make money and I think that's something we need to keep in mind. My- something we need to keep in mind. My problem, and it's really the only one I have, is I want to make sure that there's a food service there. Because in the past, what happened is it started out having lots of food, then the menu got cut totally down, and then they at one point, they actually stopped having any food, and they used the pizza place, and the only thing you could get was pizza, and you would go over and get the pizza at the pizza place, and they'd bring it back into the restaurant. So I want to make sure there's always food service and it's legitimate food service. In terms of the upstairs, I actually spent about five hours, literally five hours, on the phone getting an elevator permit because everything was shut down. And I would kind of like, I don't know what he's planning, and I don't want to force him to do anything, but based on that, that idea that it was supposed to be kind of a meeting room upstairs, I'm not sure why that didn't happen. I know it sort of became an office, but I think it would be, I don't know, I'm not really asking to have it done, but I would like to point that out. That's a lot of work, and a lot of the permit process went into getting that elevator that would go upstairs in order to have that meeting room. And I don't know, it seemed to me to be a good business move if maybe that would happen. So for me, I mean, if everybody wants to, every time, make him get a permit on the spaces, I really don't agree with that, but I would, you know, if the majority wants to do it. But I'm most concerned that there isn't a legitimate food service, and how we make sure that that happens. Because if you're having minors, to Councilman Newton's point, we want to make sure that when minors go in there, there's actually a reason for them to go in there. This is first and foremost, not a saloon, it's a on-sale general eating place. And so I think that that was one of the reasons that we actually permitted this to begin with, as you recall, Steve, is that they served food, correct?
Correct.
And that was a key component to this entire permit. Otherwise, I don't have a problem with any of the other stuff. And so, thank you, Madam Mayor.
One other question is for the lieutenant. Is there a curfew in Norco for minors that you know of?
I believe it's 10:00 PM.
Yeah, so there is a curfew in Norco for minors. Okay, so that'll probably take care of some of the questions as well.
And that's for unaccompanied minors?
Unaccompanied minors, yeah. Okay. All right, so at this time, I am going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any cards?
There are no speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Are you sure? Are there any speakers before I close the public hearing? Mr. Cozal?
Good morning, Mrs. Mayor, or Mrs. Mayor, and City Council people, as well as the staff and everyone. Thank you for your consideration for this permit. The application, when I filled it out, I basically got ahold of the old permit and almost copied everything word for word, the way it was done, except changing it from Jim and Monique to my name. That's probably the only difference in the permit, but everything else, almost word for word, was just copied. Some of the things I didn't realize I wrote down that's on it, you know. Anyway, I'm here to answer any of your questions, and I appreciate it if you would approve it. And we do serve food. We serve food like on Friday and Saturday nights until 2:00 in the morning. So you can get tacos, burritos, nachos, that kind of stuff, the whole time. And then during the week, it's usually until about 10:00 or when people start to slow down. ABC requires that we do it until 9:00, and we want to get every dollar we can out of them. So we'll serve the food until they quit buying. Is there any questions I can answer?
Do you have a kitchen in there, Rob?
We're waiting for the approval of the hood. There's the kitchen that they had before, which is basically everything you can cook with a microwave. Currently, we produce all the food over at the Maverick, then bring it over, and they assemble it, similar to Del Taco and everything else, where it's all in chafing dishes.
Okay.
And then they prepare it that way.
All right, thank you.
Rob, and you know, this holds out, your type 47 license requires you to have a bona fide kitchen, and you have to sell food anyway to get it, otherwise you have to have the other permit type. And so you're gonna have, you're gonna be selling food there and gonna have the kitchen running, right?
Oh, yeah. The permit that we're trying to get for the hood is a 12-foot hood. It's gonna have a griddle, char broiler, two fryers, and the burners, you know, for things in the pot. So it's gonna be a full kitchen.
Okay. Let's throw this one out there. You have plans for the second floor while I got you in front?
No, we don't have any plans for the second floor. My office is up on the second floor. We use it for storage, mainly for chairs, like when they have the midget wrestling, we have to bring all the chairs down and put it around the rink. So they all have to be stored, and there's like, you know, 100 chairs. And then we have alcohol storage, we have the walk-in, you know, where coal things are kept, and we have refrigeration downstairs in the kitchen. But for the bulk stuff, we keep up there. So a lot of it's used. There's probably about 40% of it that could be used as a meeting room. It'd be kind of a pain to go up and down in that elevator. It holds probably about eight people.
It's bigger than the one in Silver Lake, so. And then the other thing is the outdoor part of this. You just copied this, that one, Jim and Monique?
Yeah, I just copied it from the other one, and we haven't had anything outdoors, and we didn't have anything planned. The car show is of interest because they have it like on Hamner Avenue, and it does pretty well. But we haven't considered it, and I never even thought of it. Like I said, I just copied from one paper to the other and didn't really read it.
Okay, well, and the reason I'm asking is because I think we're all concerned about the traffic flow and not over, because it's a shared parking lot, and you know what I'm talking about there, as far as the other tenants in the complex, to make sure that we don't allow you any special preference over the other ones. And I would think that with the Fire Marshals would come out and say something about this anyway, even if we did approve it, correct?
Sorry about that. We definitely can follow up and make sure that we meet the intent of the council so there, there's good access, good ingress and egress to essentially keep everyone safe.
Okay. That's all, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Rob?
Yeah, Rob. So no major heartburn if you do decide to have a car show in the future? If you just got a special permit for that?
Yeah, well, yeah, if that's what you required. Until you guys brought it up tonight, I didn't even consider a car show. But once you brought it up, it sounded like a pretty good idea.
That's all I have. After Rob's, I have a question for the chief.
Do you have an idea on the completion time for your kitchen, Rob?
Well, the Health Department approved the plans, which in my understanding was the hardest thing, was May 22nd. And since then, it's been into the city, but the city gave it back to me with corrections about two months ago, and my contractor took it, and you don't return no phone calls or anything for the last month and a half. And I'm finding it hard to get somebody to do the work now. And he took the plans along with the corrections, so I don't even know what the corrections are. You know, I read them one time, but that's the extent of it, so I don't even have a copy.
Okay.
The city could provide you a copy of the corrections?
Well, yeah. Well, one of them is that the person that drew the plans have to sign off on them, and I didn't draw them, and I don't even know who drew them. They worked for the contractor. And I don't know, you know, I have a phone number for the contractor. He works out of his house in Riverside. That's all I know. I like to put the hood in because it's a simple 12-foot hood. You know, it's sitting over in the corner, it's brand new, and, you know.
Just for grins on this hood, in a commercial kitchen, chief, would that require like an ancil system, fire suppression, that you would have to sign off on plans and inspections? So you also have Fire Department involved with that?
Yeah, that's a separate contractor. We have him lined up. You know, he's done a lot of work in the city.
And separate approval, so that's what I was...
Yes. He does his own plans and submits them.
We can definitely, too, meet with the applicant, too, and get Sandy out there. Like, you ask a good question, Greg. I mean, it has a rigid process for inspection at a new construction, and then, as you, we all know, we do annuals here in the city of Norco, but we could definitely, the Fire Marshal and I or Chief Lane, meet with you and provide the best input we can to help you be successful.
Yeah, Sandy has been over there probably a couple of weeks ago, wanting to know, because she's heard from the ancil system guy, but she wanted to know what the status of the plans were because she hasn't got anything across her desk. And I've met with Sandy on other projects in the past, so I know her pretty well.
All right. Any other questions for Rob? All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
I'm a little concerned just about the kitchen, maybe getting a deadline on that. I know, I don't know how he's gonna be able to do that if he can't reach his contractor, but is there some way we could check that up in three months, six months, make sure it's up and operational? I mean, you might have to, I don't know.
Although, assuming that your concern is that he serves food, since the permit requires it, he's got to continue, even though he's not manufacturing it on that kitchen, he's still got to provide food service.
But doesn't he have to have a kitchen eventually? I mean, or does he?
But that kitchen is under the jurisdiction of ABC. Is that correct? And the alcoholic?
The service of food is controlled by ABC. The city will definitely process permits for his hood. We can't help him get in contact with his contractor, though. So what we have, we have a list of corrections. What we don't have are red lines, because we give those back.
Steve, my question is back, just stay by that type 47, ABC type 47 that says, "Must have suitable kitchen facilities." And then what Kevin brought up about what Water Wheel did before, which was kind of funky, was go to the pizza place and bring the pizza over here to eat.
And at the time...
I don't know if it...
They owned both. They owned the Water Wheel and the Pizza Parlor.
Yeah, but still, you're, you know.
But it's, yeah, I was kind of...
But, but... Right, right. And then you, then it went to the pizza place. Yeah. Yeah, I'm just looking at determining what is suitable kitchen facilities mean.
And that determination is ABC, and it may well have been that at least times that the Water Wheel didn't meet it. I mean, somebody could have gone to the ABC and said revoke the license.
There'd be a surprise, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Can't believe anybody in town wouldn't follow all the rules.
This is Norco.
Make a stab at a motion, or do, I'm thinking, make a stab, go ahead, and since he doesn't really care, go ahead and change 11 per Steve's recommendation and approve the rest of it.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve Entertainment Permit 2019-02 with the exception of Condition 11.
Which will require, therefore, a special event permit for any outside activity.
Can I point a discussion? If, if for, while he wants to come back after this thing runs, could we then extend that thing so it's a permanent part of the thing? If he needs...
Sure.
Okay, so it's not a permanent...
That's what happened with the prior one.
Yeah, with the prior, okay.
We will be taking a manual roll call. I'm having issues with this item. So, Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bash?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman? Mayor Pro Tim Hanna? Mayor Gudmeyer?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, which is City Council, City Manager, and Staff Communications. We will start with Andy.
Madam Mayor, I don't have any additional points.
All right, Ted.
Just a reminder, the horse affair is this weekend up at Ingalls Park, and then Norco High School is having a choir. Are they having the choir do a recital this weekend, Friday and Saturday night?
Friday and Saturday, yes. Berwin?
Yeah, this Saturday is the annual bus rodeo at Hammett. I'll be going down, but I won't be driving this year because I'm crippled.
Might be an advantage.
All right, Lieutenant.
Just a reminder, October 24th, Pike's Peak Park, we're hosting our Pizza in the Park and Trunk or Treat community event. So that will start at about 4:00 PM and go to about 6:00 or 7:00, depending on turnout.
All right, Chief. Gina, Brian.
Just a couple things, a reminder, since we don't have another meeting, but Veterans Day, November 11th, and we also have our reenactment up at Ingalls coming on that same weekend. October 23rd, we are working with Norco High School, the school district, to do a spirit rally up at Ingalls, and it will be bringing back a tradition that had been going on here for years, and we'll be doing a old-fashioned bonfire there. And we've been working with the Fire Department and AQMD on that and have gotten all the approvals. So it'll be a time, it'll start around 5:30, and when it gets dark, then there'll be an official ceremony, and it'll be kind of like the old days. So it'll be a lot of fun, and we'll have more information coming out on that real soon.
Steve? Chad?
Yes, just want to remind the public that our next Free Dump Day up at Ingalls is October 19th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon. Remember, you cannot use trailers to bring your material, but you can come as many times as you want if you load it up in your vehicle. So we encourage everyone to take that opportunity to come to the Free Dump Day on October 19th. Thank you.
Matt?
Surprisingly, yes. So October is National Cyber Security Awareness Month, so just wanted to share a few things. The Cyber Security Alliance of the United States is, has a key message, "Own it, secure it, and protect it with a hashtag #BeCyberSmart." So this is involving your online identity and any information that's put out on the Internet. It's just a matter of understanding your digital profile, securing your digital profile, and maintaining it. So there's that. And then this past weekend, myself and the IT team came in and we redid our server room wiring. So this is what we, unfortunately for the past five years or so, yeah, trying to trace and troubleshoot was kind of a mess. So came in and spent from 10:00 AM to the next day just rewiring everything. So that's what the network outage was. We did take a time lapse of the project, so kind of see like us in action, just going at it. And see, we started fresh. We took out all the old wires, color-coded everything, and just went at it. So, yep, and this is our finished project, or product, right here. So we're still cleaning up and identifying objects, but this has just been tremendous, and I have to commend both Mark and Bruno. and I have to commend both Mark and Bruno, and just sticking at it and keeping with it, so it was great. Thank you.
Dana.
Just a reminder to the community and to the council, we still have seats open on the Historic Preservation Commission and EDACT, so we are recruiting. Please get the word out there, you have friends, family here in the neighborhood or here in the community, please urge them to get involved and put their application into me at the City Clerk's Office. Thank you. And we also have the Town Hall meeting coming up on Monday, October 21st, so you will be seeing more information coming out on our website and our social media, so we can get you all there, and you can speak on behalf of your community. Thank you.
Greg? Kevin? John? All right, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to adjourn this meeting at 9:30.